Okay, we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are.
Here.
There.
Yes.
Here.
The man, here.
Here.
I'm Senator Abbott and Michelle.
Here.
Public meeting participation rules. One, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Two, begin by stating your name and address. Three, give us your comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed. Or to ensure that everyone has time to speak, we can address other and address other items on the agenda we may. Limited individual speaking time to five minutes if time permits. We may allow you one additional time period to provide new information. Five, please be respectful of the planning commission applicant and your neighbors. Thank you for attending. Tom Hilper, Chair. Okay, adoption of agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Larry.
Support.
Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of minutes, January twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
Shannon Dillon, second. Any? All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Okay, now we're at public comment. If anybody has anything in general they want to comment about. Not regarding to the, not regarding the cases, now is the time to do that. Or on, I don't know if anybody else is online besides Denise, but. They can. Okay. Okay, correspondence from Richard Duel reports oh one twenty-three and oh two twenty-three.
Make a motion, we accept those.
Accept those.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, uh, public hearing case P dash zero one dash twenty-three. James and Julie Nowak requested special approval use for an accessory building exceeding two hundred percent of the main building ground. Or area property is located at one oh eight Woodland Drive, parcel number oh one eight. Dash one six five dash zero 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 dash zero zero eight dash oh one in a single residential R one zone district. This, if you want to, uh. Oh yeah, okay. Motion open.
Motion open up the public hearing.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, alright.
James Nowak, one oh eight Woodland Drive. My son Dan.
Dan Nowak, one oh eight Woodland Drive, and we're here to try to get a special use permit for a a building exceeding two hundred percent of our main dwelling. We're looking at a forty-two by sixty-four pole building.
And the drawing is.
You have it upside down. So that's, there's what.
Okay, uh. Um, Kevin, you were. You, uh. Obviously, uh, inspected the area, you and Nathan, and you have any?
No.
No, I actually worked out while on there. Clean on their trailer and stuff outside. Things of something behind us.
Kevin, if I can ask a question. So this is. This building that they want to build exceeds the residence by two hundred percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they all film that they have also.
Oh, okay.
There's my forty-nine or.
Yes.
And twelve by fifteen started.
But they have a square footage, their lot sizes. By all they have.
Yeah, anything else is fine.
I have another question.
Once I looked at the drawings, it sounded like it was going.
Turned the drawings the right way. Okay, and, uh, reviewing, uh, special, special approval use report by Rick Duel. I, I'm assuming everybody read those and I, unless you want me to read them, uh. Line by line, I will do that, but he, uh, doesn't see any, he has not addressed, uh. All the standards have been met according to his, uh. His report for an accessory building. I talked to Nathan and he said he and Kevin have been working with. Jim and Julie and Dan and they're, uh. They're satisfied with, uh, their proposal and, uh. Um, so, uh. Any audience have any questions or? Anybody on the board?
No.
Okay, then I will have a motion to close the public hearing then. I'll make that motion. Norman and Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have, uh, uh, our options are to, number one, approve with no restrictions. Two, to approve with restrictions. Three, to deny.
I'd like to make a motion to prove the special land use for the construction of accessory building. That one oh eight Woodland Drive. And a parcel number, you read it before, based on the findings of fact contained in report. Zero, one, two, three.
Okay, Norman Dillon. Second, okay, and then you're gonna do a roll call.
Yeah. Cory.
Yes.
There.
Yes.
Yes.
The man, yes.
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 Okay, now we're just. Jimmy, you can come over here and sign this. And then we'll give you the applicants company.
Dan, are you gonna be the builder?
Cool.
Julie's gonna be the inspector.
No, she's gonna carry the boards.
She'll do most of the work.
Yeah. Financing.
My little carpers are just where you're gonna be out here because.
It'll save you for the concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we're more regulated and ought to be more than.
So. Present case. Yeah. Realize the good drive should be there.
Thank you. You need me help? You need me help? Helpers prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay or if you want to leave, whatever, it's up to you. Okay. Case number E dash zero two dash two three, Kurt Dubey requests a special approval use for an accessory dwelling unit, unit slash guest house properties located at nine six six one West Long Lake Road, parcel number zero one eight dash one nine five dash zero 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 dash one one four dash zero zero in a waterfront residential zone district.
I moved to open a public hearing.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and?
Yeah.
You can come up here. And I assume you're Kurt?
Yes.
Okay.
Nine six six one West Long Lake, I'm here for, to ask for a special approval use for the accessory dwelling. You know, our guest house.
Kurt, I did a drive-by. Is it a lot or is it?
It's a lot.
It's, so it's an empty lot right now and then you guys live.
They have the two cottages right up.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out which one was which. Thank you.
Yeah.
Which he's gonna keep the one closest to the lake as a guest cottage or mother-in-law dwelling, whatever you want to call it, and then the next one alongside it is gonna be a shed.
Yeah.
Correct, that's what I seen your drawing, okay.
You're living in the one closest to the lake.
Yes, that one is season.
Okay, and, um, I know just some things that I, uh. The new house is gonna have a, gonna have a new um, drain field and it looks like you just put a, uh, well looks.
The wells.
Relatively new.
There, yeah.
Yeah. And that's Department of, uh, Health Department, uh. Watches that anyway, okay. Anybody have any questions for?
I was just trying to clarify which, which spot it was going. It's so framed in there, I was telling. I'm kind, I don't know that I could live that close to my neighbors, but.
You have one of the bigger lots.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot bigger houses and a lot smaller lots.
Yeah.
Right by you. Kevin, you have anything to add? No? Kevin and Nathan have been working closely with Kurt and he's, I guess, uh, according to Nathan, he's dotted all the I's, crossed all the T's, so, uh. And, and, uh. Also, uh, Richard Duel's report. I'm sure everybody has read it, meets all the, uh. Standards have been all met for, uh. For this type of a, uh. This type of a special, special use.
I mean. What are you gonna do with all that extra space you have compared to what you have now?
Buy a different lawn mower. Yeah. Right, yeah. Already.
That's gonna be great.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's right. I have no other questions.
Anybody else? Good.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye. Um.
Okay, we have, we can approve, we can approve with conditions or we can deny, that's our options.
I'll make a motion to approve the special land use for the accessory dwelling unit slash guest house located at nine six six one West Long Lake Road in Alpena. And stated parcel number based on the findings of fact contained in report oh two dash two three.
All second.
Voice of both, Cory.
Yes.
There.
Yes.
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 Hey Kurt, I will, uh, put a stamp on here and you can sign it and you can sign that down.
Are you building it?
Oh, yeah.
That's cool. Well, it's only gonna take you fifteen or twenty minutes, it's a tiny house.
Yeah.
Thinking lots.
You gonna put a full basement under it like old Mike's done or?
No.
So.
And you just wanna leave the, uh. Don't wanna block the color.
Right.
And the, the road commission would have a problem.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, that was one of my specs, just parking the blood.
That side wouldn't be as bad as the other.
Right.
Runny side of the road would be. Lot of water on down there. Right, I know.
I was also. Maybe you guys weren't. Uh, she works, my wife does. I work on a town.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I don't like going wandering mountains, sometimes people have dogs and. I can bring Steve, I saw everything and wanted to see. Okay, that's yours, Kurt.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Enjoy, yeah, good to see you.
Enjoying your house.
Yeah. We'll come and check on it around July fourth. Or the weekend before maybe.
And you like your steak, huh?
Yeah, just wanna make sure the view is good and, you know, the conformities are there.
Okay, and like I told, uh, Jim and Julie and Dan, you're welcome to stay and, uh, I'm sure Andrea must be, must be here to stay, so. Okay, and now we're, uh. Gonna get into our discussion about the master plan, recreational plan with Denise Klein.
Hello, Alpena Township.
Hi Denise.
Denise.
Love your haircut, by the way.
Thank you. Stopped it all off.
Yeah.
Um, so we have really good representation for our tour later this month from Alpena Township, so I'm just giving you guys a thumb up, thumbs up because it's gonna be fun. For our bus tour to the solar and wind facility. Trying to remember who was signed up, but there were several of you guys.
I am. Norm. Larry. All of us, all of us people that are retired signed up, yeah. It's a free ride.
I can do that. You guys gotta work, so. We'll let you know, I guess, I'm gonna go.
Oh, you're. Oh, I couldn't get the type away. Yeah, I'm bummed, but.
Yeah.
I'll get a lowdown from everybody else.
Yeah, do a little, do a little dance for nice. You don't want any snow that day.
No.
Okay, so it is master plan season and recreation plan season, so, um, it looks like from what Nathan's been talking with me about that we're gonna be doing both of them. Um, kind of, you know, at the same time, but we need to stagger it, so here, here's my thoughts, um. Let me just start with the recreation plan. I know, I think the agenda says master plan, or maybe it says recreation plan too, so I'm gonna start with the recreation plan. So, we're gonna do that, unless you guys tell me different, with you know, the, the combination of communities that pooled their resources together last time and did the, um, joint recreation plan, which saves you a couple of thousand dollars each instead of doing it completely on your own, so. Um. Wilson Township, Green Township, Austinic Township. Uh, you guys and I think also the county are going to be partnering together, so. At least, that's the way I understand it. You guys tell me if there's something different in mind.
No, that's, uh, that's. It worked well last time, so we don't know why we would, uh.
Yep, it's, and it's a, it's a cost savings too, otherwise it'd be probably five, five thousand dollars a a community and it's, it's gonna save you.
That's good too.
Yep, so, um. What I would like to do, because it's a, you know, when you have all those different communities working together, we gotta kind of coordinate it. Um, it's a lot easier and I don't, I wasn't involved in the recreation plan last time, I don't think. I think one of our other staff people did it that we had at the time, but I'm gonna be the one doing it this time. So. Because we have you know, these several communities working together, when we have meetings, it's gonna be really hard. You know, to have everybody at the same place because there's a lot of schedules to try and coordinate, so I'm wondering if it makes sense to have, like to pick a couple of people from the planning commission to serve on like a subcommittee. So like, the, the only time it's gonna need to meet is, for example, when we put together a recreation survey. That's usually the first thing we do with a recreation plan. You've gotta have two forms of public input. Usually it's a recreation survey, you know, we do that online, and then the second form of public input is your public hearing. You know, at the end of the process, so we used to have public input sessions, but we just people, we can't get a lot of people to show up to those anymore. People much prefer to answer a survey online. So, and we get a really good response with those, so. I'm, I guess I'm just wondering, rather than like, you know, me coming around to every meeting and saying, okay, let's talk about survey questions, I think it makes sense for a couple of people from each planning commission to meet, we can even do it online, doesn't really matter. And work on getting the survey correct. Um, as a group and then, you know, you could bring it back to each of your planning commissions and just say, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine with, um.
Okay.
That's fine with us, yeah.
Is there, um. Any couple of people that would want to do that?
I'm happy to serve on the, on the rec plan, uh, committee for that. But, I don't need to if anybody else is interested. Don't everybody jump at once.
Well, I will, I will, if, you know.
Calm down.
I don't, yeah, I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and really, like I said, it's just gonna be you know, very limited, it's just, we need to be able to, because the survey is where, you know, we really need everybody's input, kind of at the same time, discuss the questions, what we're gonna ask and stuff, so. What I'd like to do is, because we're also gonna be doing the same thing pretty much for your master plan, I do not want to do those two surveys at the same time. I think that's too much out there. Your master plan needs to be separated from your recreation plan because you're doing your recreation plan with these other communities, your master plan is just you. You know, just the township, so I don't want to mix those two processes up because I just think it gets too confusing and the public's gonna wonder why are we entering the survey and now there's another survey. So I want to put a little bit of time in between the two surveys, if that's okay, um. For a master plan survey, we've been getting a really good response with doing the online survey, just, and I, I know I'm, I'm jumping over the master plan now, but we just, we're on the, in the process of working on a couple of master plans right now, Preskill Township is one of them and Tuscaraw Township, which is Indian River, is the other one that's going right now, and when they did their online surveys, they both got over four hundred responses, which I thought was great. Um, so I want to try to beat that with you guys, okay, so you're in a, it's, it's a competition now. So we've gotta have at least more than four hundred and thirty responses for your master plan survey, that's my goal.
When you're asking people for their opinion, you might, you might want to slow the roll on that. And so that's the Alpena Township, so.
I, I get it, so. So I think what we'll do, I'm just trying to think, normally what I do when I start a master plan is I do the, I do the public input survey first. We're gonna hold off, so we're gonna wait till maybe summer, so we need to get the recreation plan survey out there now, pretty much. Because I know it seems really early, so they're due at the end of January, and it seems like we're starting really early, we are not. It always takes a long time to get recreation plan together. Um, there's a lot of requirements, like, you know. Uh, notification requirements and, and, and public review requirements and stuff, so it always, starting in the spring is perfect, it always just about works out perfect that way, so. I want to get that survey out in the spring and then have a little bit of time in between that and then your master plan survey, which is gonna be a much wider, you know, that's gonna be a bigger effort, a bigger survey, actually. So I want, I'm, I'm targeting summer for that survey. So, with your master plan, I don't think you need any sort of subcommittee or anything, so it'll just be this group, unless you want a subcommittee, I, I guess I should ask you guys. Um, I think last time you did your master plan, it was planning commission that reviewed all the chapters, um. You don't have to do it that way, I've got, and another example is Preskill Township, they actually formed a subcommittee of part of their planning commission and, um, citizens to do the review and to come up with survey questions and stuff, so I mean, you know, you don't have to do it that way, but I guess you tell me, what's your preference? Do you want it to be a planning commissioner or you want to do some kind of bigger, bigger group?
I think. Whole board last time.
I was just thinking, like, shouldn't there be other?
Other, okay.
Township board, at least. Besides, Norm.
I just, I know that, uh, like, one thing that's when, that's coming up everywhere, Denise is that there's not adequate housing. And so, I, I mean, any, every, every, any place you read about is, uh, that's got any growth going on. Or even not a lot of growth going on, there's just not housing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's.
That's a focus area for.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's good. So I mean, we can structure it so that when we have these meetings and we cover chapters, you know. It's gonna be with the planning commission, I mean, you can always have, you got one, you have one board, you just have one board, Norm, are you the only board member, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, you could have, you know, you, you could have other board members that show up on those nights, um. If you want to have some kind of a, a, you know, a wider group discussion and, and especially gonna be important when we do get into goals and action items, I'm not sure. I need to go back and look, I don't. I'm pretty sure your current master plan doesn't have like an implementation uh, section where you talk about, here are the actual tasks we're gonna do to implement our goals. It probably doesn't, that's something we're gonna change, we're gonna, we're gonna put that in there because I think you need that, um. Okay, so.
Um. That's kind of up to the, uh, the board is, uh, really, if they want to be more involved, then.
Well, when I mentioned the board, I meant the planning commission, I think we should all be involved in that.
Okay.
As far as more board members, uh, we can always carry that information to them because they're everything to anybody. So.
Yeah.
We could ask for them if they want some extra input, I think you get too many people, you're gonna
keep.
Okay.
Chasing our tail.
Okay, so what I'll do then, just for these two, so. Coming up here yet, oh, I don't know if it'll this month, it may be in early May. I'm gonna try to get this group together for the recreation plan, this group, you know, the, the subcommittee of all the, the townships and the county to get the recreation plan going, get that survey going, get that out there, so in the meantime. Um, we're gonna start working on for the recreation plan, getting some background information done because we have to go visit like all of the recreation facilities and do like a barrier-free assessment, we have to refresh that, every single time you do recreation plan, you gotta do that again. Um, so we're gonna be, start putting together some background information while we're waiting, the only reason I'm waiting until May is just because this month is horrible, the schedule's horrible, so there's just not a lot of time, I know it seems like the month just started, but it's like over for me almost, because too many things, so. I'm aiming for May to get that recreation, recreation plan survey out there. Then probably also in May is when we'll start with the background chapters of the master plan. So I'll just, it, it may not seem like, you know, not, anything's happening, because I may not have anything to show you right away. But I'm gonna start updating your chapters, getting it in a, in a nice new format. Um, and then what we'll try to do probably maybe late June or so is when we'll aim for that master plan survey, we'll decide when we get in the recreation. We'll decide when we get in the recreation plan subcommittee, cuz it'll depend on how long we want that out there, how long we want that open, like I said, I want a little bit of. Cushion time between that and your master plan survey. Any other question, I really don't have anything concrete yet, this is just kinda ideas I'm throwing, throwing around. Any questions or anything you wanna talk about, I know you already mentioned the housing thing, which I know is. Big deal, so.
Who has been through this? Should we be prepping, like, the background that we should know, or at least from my, from my perspective on the.
So for, have you been through any, I'm trying to remember how long you've been on there, have you been through any of these yet?
No.
Okay, so it's brand new, so.
Yeah.
You, so basically. I guess you could look through your old one, you know, the current one, and just kinda get familiar with what was in there. Typically, for when we meet, we talk about the survey, we're just, we're gonna go talk about each facility, and like, what do we wanna ask about each facility? You know, are there issues at each facility that we need input from the public from? I guess that's the big thing for recreation plan is just get familiar with. Where improvements are needed. Do you guys have, who, who, I'm trying to even remember. You have the, the, the. The nature preserve. You have, what else do you have?
Just cleaned that up yesterday.
Some kind of a park off by Partridge Point.
Yeah.
But we don't own that. We don't own that. That's D N R.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so. Nathan was in talks with that, though, at one point, because there's, there was an issue down there, so.
It'll be easy. It'll be easy to come up with some. You know, you don't have a whole lot of facilities to talk about, so this, this should be, this should be pretty simple, and then, basically, recreation plan is just. You know, getting the input, updating the chapter on the facilities, updating the barrier free stuff. Just getting a, you know, short update on your planning process, we have to report on that. And you know what your action i- items are, and what the reasons for, like a basis for action, here's our reasons why we feel we need these improvements. That it's, so it's pretty simple. And then, you know, there's process for approval, so we have to. Put it out there for public review, once you get your plan together for thirty days, and then it goes to planning commission, holds a public hearing. And then goes to township board, and then. We have to have it in, so the whole point of the recreation plan is so that you're eligible for grant funding. If you should want to apply for grant funding from the D N R. In the spring and next spring, so that's why we have to get it in by the end of January. Is the D N R needs to review it, approve it, and since everybody's going together, even if you guys don't have a. A facility that you wanna apply for a grant for, I'll bet you there's somebody else that does, so that's why we gotta get it done by. End of January, so then that shouldn't be a problem. And then master plan, there's no deadline, okay, so your master plan's probably expiring, but you know, there's no master plan, please, coming along and telling you your master plan's expired, so. You know, we'll work out, we'll take a little bit more time with that, rec plan's gotta be the focus, just cuz we do have a deadline with that one, so. We'll, we'll be a little bit more, I won't be there every meeting, like at the zoning, you know, going two hours through a chapter with you guys, so.
Thank you.
So the real important one, you know, I'll do all the background work, I may have questions that I email. You know, I'll probably bother Nathan, most of all, so I'll have questions that I'll email Nathan about, you know. Just different things that are, that are happening there, and then when we really wanna sit down around the table, and I'll be there in person, is when we go over the. Goals and objectives and action items, and especially your future land use, because I know we need to take a really hard look at your zoning map. And where you feel changes are needed in the future. Cuz I think there's gonna be some, I mean, we did a little bit of that during the zoning, obviously. Cuz we did, we actually did some changes during the zoning rewrite, but now is the time to look even farther ahead, like, what changes do we see happening, cuz that really. Affects, you know, when somebody comes in and asks for a rezoning. Having your future land use read exactly the way you want it to read, that you're supposed to be going back and looking at that when somebody asks for a rezoning. So those are the, the, the goals and the future land use are the two really important chapters for a master plan. That's all I have for you, wasn't that easy?
It was easy.
Super easy.
And it was a good, it's a good ordinance, we think, we better than the one we replaced, so.
Oh, and I owe you guys an update, you pa, you guys passed a. You passed some amendments lately, and I, I don't have them yet in your document, so. I promise I haven't forgotten, I will put your amendments in, I just, it's on my list.
Okay.
We appreciate all you do, Denise, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Proposed.